Good morning, all you awesome peoples. Sorry, I am five minutes late. See who's able to make it on, see if people are able to make it on this morning. There we go, here come peoples. I'm about, I'm five minutes late this morning, guys, so sorry about that. Had to get set up in a different room today, so. Anyway, hey, you guys who are on, can you hear me? Oh, we got more people on. Type me a message and let me know if you guys are able to see and hear me okay. We'll wait for a few comments to come in before we dive into this next teaching. Are you guys able to see and hear me okay? Hey, we got California on, we got Susan on, Alexis, we got, you good, you can see and hear me, awesome. Audio visual, good, awesome, 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 okay, sorry, I was five minutes late. We have been traveling nonstop the past two weeks. And got in late, well, got in yesterday afternoon and went to bed early. And I am using my husband's office this morning, we have family coming in for Thanksgiving. So my office is being used this week as a guest bedroom, because it has a daybed in it. Hey Brenda Bechtel, it's good to go, awesome, so here we are again. And this is another teaching on discerning the spirit realm. And we're still on chapter two, they shall hear my voice. And I'm so excited that you all have joined, and guys, please feel free to share this with people, to share this with a friend. Guys, I'm so excited about the sale of this book, Discerning the Spirit Realm. If this book is blessing you, please write a review on Amazon. Go to our website to order it, christianharvestintl.org. Or you can also get it at Amazon and Kindle, Barnes and Noble. And so this book is helping so many people. I've literally had messages from people saying out of any book they have read, especially intercessors and those with a strong gift of discernment, this has helped them more than any other book that they've read on this topic at this point. Because of how we are talking about things, which really, even on this session today, we're going to talk about things that aren't normally talked about. So we're going to talk about this whole seeing, hearing, feeling, sensing, and even smell that can be used in the realm of discernment. Oh, Elizabeth says she can hear me, but I am blurry, man, okay. Well, Lord, let the blurry go away in Jesus's name, man, okay. On my picture, it looks awesome, it looks perfect. So I'm sorry if I'm a little blurry for you guys, so I'm glad the audio is good. So just focus on, if I'm blurry on your screen, focus on the audio, I guess. And yeah, so on my screen, it's, there's no blur at all, not pixelated. So, Lord, we say it'll work for everybody as this communication goes out. And so, amen, so anyway, guys, if it's blurry, I am so sorry about that. So, but we're going to do the audio, we'll get it out there anyway. And so, it is so great to have you guys this morning, I just want to say that. And Karen, thank you, Karen, I'm so glad the book is blessing you. And I just want to ask everyone, if man, if you're way willing to write a testimony about the book, put it on Amazon, so we can share this with others, I really feel like, and I had dinner with our publishers when we were in Dallas, and they said, this is such a great handbook for intercessors, for warriors during this time and during this season. And just a period in our Christian walk, you know? So I'm going to pray, and we're going to dive into this teaching, because I want to teach you, that's what we're doing. And so, Lord, I just thank you for all of those that can be on this morning, for all of those who will view this in the days ahead. Lord, I thank you, Father God, that this will empower the prophets, the prayer warriors, the intercessors, or believers in general, Lord, just all believers. And Lord, I thank you that we are unveiling and pulling the veil off of what it means to have this gift of discernment, how it functions differently with everyone, that we all don't even function within this gift the same. So Holy Spirit, I thank you for all who are watching now, for all who will watch in the days ahead. Lord, I thank you that this will empower them, Lord, within this discernment realm. And Lord, let me share everything that you want me to share today, let it be shared in Jesus's name. And so, guys, I know I mentioned this briefly at the end of the teaching last week, but we're going to dive into it a little bit more, we're going to start with visions, like seeing in the spirit realm. And you know, I've said this briefly last week, a vision is like a dream, but you're awake when it occurs. And I think a great example of this is the Apostle Peter's commission to eat with and minister to the Gentiles, and how this came, he was like in a trance, but he had a vision. And so, I want to just, you know, talk about this, this is in Acts 10. And in this, in this portion of Acts 10, the whole, the whole chapter of Acts 10, we know that an angel of the Lord came to Cornelius, and he was a Roman military officer who was in charge of 100 men stationed in Caesarea. And what is so way cool, guys, we have been in and out of Spain many, 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 many times. And what is so amazing about this is, is this actually is talking about an area of Spain that they were in. And, oh, anyway, all right, but I'll hold off on some of that, anyway, I won't go into that whole history, that whole history. But here we go, Peter, right, here we are. And, and, and here they are, Cornelius is in Caesarea. And what I was saying about Spain is, when you continue to read in the book of Acts, there were many, there was, there were instances where the gospel was spread to the Gentiles. And Cornelius, actually, he was, he was, it's a long story, I can't give you the whole history lesson, but he's from Spain, that's all I can tell you at this point, the whole history lesson of what we know from going into Spain. So really, gospel was really spread, it was even encountered Spanish people when the gospel spread among the nations. It's just real exciting, I won't give you that whole history lesson right now, that was a good rabbit trip. But anyway, here we have Cornelius, and the angel of the Lord came to him and appeared to him, right? We know what happened. And, and, and the angel of the Lord told him to send for Peter. So they send for Peter, and we're going to pick up in verse nine. And, you know, Cornelius sends two of his men to contact Peter, because the angel of the Lord told him to go where to find Peter. So, we're now Acts 10, verse nine. "The next day around noon, as Cornelius's men were approaching Joppa, Peter went up to the flat roof of the house to pray. He was hungry and wanted to eat, but while lunch was being prepared, he fell into a trance." And so, and he entered into another realm. Guys, I can tell you, and I hope that this will empower you as well, I have had visions that are so real. It's like I am living in the vision as I'm seeing. It doesn't happen all the time, but it has happened many times with me. And sometimes I literally, when I'm praying and interceding in my prayer room, I actually feel as if I am in the location that I am praying about because of the vision that I am in and what I'm seeing in intercession. Sometimes I'll be in a vision that the Lord is playing out, and it's like I'm, I'm standing in that vision, and it is so real for me, I cannot ignore it. And so, literally, this is kind of, but yet I'm not asleep, I'm fully awake, but I'm in this encounter type thing. And so, this is the kind of thing that was going on with Peter. And so, "As the heavenly realm opened up, he saw something resembling a large linen tablecloth that descended from heaven above, being let down to the earth by its four corners. As it floated down, he saw that it held many kinds of four-footed animals, reptiles, and wild birds." And I love this, "A voice said to him, Peter, go and prepare, go and prepare them to be eaten." And Peter replied, "There's no way I could do that, Lord, for I've never eaten anything forbidden or impure according to our Jewish laws." The voice spoke again, "Nothing is unclean if God desires it to be clean." I love that. The voice and, and the vision was repeated three times, let me tell you this. If you have a dream three times, if you have the same vision three times, if you have something repeated three times or even more, God is definitely trying to get your attention, pay attention, and dialogue with the Holy Spirit. Okay, Nikita is saying that the camera's very choppy, man, but that you can hear me well. Guys, praise God, we're going to focus on the audio, I'm so sorry about that. Lord, I just speak, this will work when I take from our house, in Jesus's name. Okay, so Peter was so stunned by the vision, now he's had it three times, God's getting his attention. And so, that he couldn't stop wondering about what it meant. Meanwhile, Cornelius's men had learned where Peter was staying, and at that same moment, were standing outside the gate. They called out to those in the house, "Is this where Simon the Rock is staying?" As Peter was in deep thought, trying to interpret the vision, the Spirit said to him, "Go downstairs now, for three men are looking for you. Don't hesitate to go with them, because I have sent them." Peter went downstairs to the men and said, "I believe I'm the one you're looking for, what brings you here?" They answered, "We serve Cornelius, a Roman military captain who sent us to find you. He is a devout man of the highest integrity, who worships God and is respected throughout the Jewish community. He was divinely instructed," I love this, "through the appearance of an angel to summon you to his home and to listen to the message that you would bring him." So Peter invited them to stay for the night, the next morning, they departed, accompanied from believer, company with believers from Joppa, they arrived. Then the next day, they arrived in Caesarea, where Cornelius was waiting anxiously for them and gathered together all of his relatives and close friends. And so, anyway, they bowed down to Peter, he said, "Stand up, I'm only a man." They talked together, and Peter found that they were, they were waiting to hear his words, they were so hungry. And so, basically, I won't go through the whole thing, but then he begins to preach the gospel to them, and the Gentiles get saved, and this totally changed the face of Christianity, right? For the, and then the history of Christianity in the world to this very day, through that trance, through that higher dimension, through that vision, while Peter was awake, that the Lord gave him three times. So we really want to understand that God in these open visions, it's like it, it, it might be happening in your eyes, where you're seeing it with your eyes, it might be where you're seeing the vision in your spirit, but it's so real to you, you know that it is happening. And so, I have been in multiple, like I said, situations where this has happened with me. One vision, I was actually reading from, from, I believe it was the book at that time, when I was studying, many, many years ago, I was reading from First and Second Corinthians and doing my Bible study. And all of a sudden, I just felt this presence of the Lord come on me, and I was totally awake, not asleep, but all of a sudden, it's like I'm in this vision, I'm in it while it's happening. And I, and it was, and I was outside the walls of Jerusalem, and I was sitting at a fire. And I was, and there were these men that were sitting around this fire, and it was nighttime. And the fire was burning, and they were wearing clothes as if it was during the Bible times. And all of a sudden, I saw this man walking toward me in this vision. And he got right to me, and I knew in my spirit that this vision, that in this vision, the man that I was seeing was Paul. And he looked at me, and that, because you just know, and he looked at me, and he said, "Your, he said, "Your fullness and calling of destiny to the nations will, will, will fully open up when, when the door, when the doors of Jerusalem and Israel are opened up to you in a very significant way." Now, guys, that was way, way, way back, now this was a vision, I'm not talking to the dead, this is the Lord giving me a vision, and it was like I was in Bible times, but he was making it so real. And I, I really haven't shared a lot about that vision, the Lord just told me to hold it, to pray into it. And literally, last year in January, and I've been to Israel now twice, when the doors opened, man, I was in Israel, actually, three times in one year, and, and, which was last year. And so, but then, I was speaking at John and Jolene Hamel's Revolution event in January, and Ruth Ward Heflin, amazing intercessor, one of her spiritual daughters was there, they live in DC, Bill and Connie Wilson. And after I shared some testimonies about how I'd been in Ruth's meetings and the encounters I had had with Jesus in those meetings, what literally then began to transpire, but what happened was, she showed up the next day, and it's an ancient key to the gate of Jerusalem that was Ruth Ward Heflin's, that Connie said, "The Lord told us you are to have this key." And so, then COVID hit, but I'm telling you, soon as COVID lifts and restrictions lift, I will be in Israel. And because it's a part of our calling and destiny to nations, I can tell you so many other things, but this is just, so we can have visions, so guys, when things begin to unfold like that, dialogue with the Holy Spirit about it. Now, notice, I had that vision with Paul, guys, I'm telling you, when I had that vision with Paul, it was 1993, okay? We are now in the year 2000, this happened at the very, I mean, we are now in the year 2020. This literally happened at the, at the very end, December 30th, 2019, that exchange with that key. And so, and so, you know, sometimes God will speak to us way in advance before something is to happen, and sometimes I've had visions that are so real that I instantly do something with it, and we change his history through intercession and prophetic acts as a result, all right? And so, I'm going to read to you a quote from my spiritual father, C. Peter Wagner. And when he talks about this encounter that Peter had, he said, "God knew that ordinary communication processes would not be adequate to move Peter in the radical direction he wanted him to go. So God did an extraordinary thing and gave Peter the famous vision of the unclean food in the sheep. Peter's background had personally prepared him to receive visions. For one thing, it would, it would fit his worldview unlike many today. Peter believed that one of God's normal ways of communicating from time to time was through visions and dreams. He was praying at the time, so his heart was open to God. He had been fasting too. Luke doesn't say he was, but we read that Peter became very hungry and act tense in. Prayer along with fasting removes obstacles to hearing God's voice." So, you know, this is just a great example, God needed something new to happen, so he had to speak in such a way where it could not be denied. So, Lord, I thank you for even those who are listening right now, and that, that you will increase the, the ability to have visions, whether they're seeing it with their natural eyes, or they're seeing it in their spirit, or they're encountering a vision where they are in the vision while it's happening. Lord, we thank you for an increase in this. And so, another way is that we can hear in the spirit realm. And this is the ability to hear what is occurring, like in the spirit. Sometimes it can be the sound of angels worshiping, I love it, I love it. It could be the sound of angelic activity in the room. It can also be the sound of the demonic. So guys, I hear the sound of the angelic, I can hear the angels worshiping, it's a very heavenly, beautiful sound. I can hear the tongues of angels, I've experienced that before, where it's like you're hearing this sound, and you know it's, it's, it's like voices, but it's different. And I know, I know, I know, Katie, I'm so sorry that the camera is choppy, we're going to have to fix this, this should, we have the highest, Lord, we pray over our communication on our ranch, because we have the highest internet capacity that we can have out here where we live, and it's supposed to be really good. Yes, the angels worshiping, and so we can hear the angels worshiping. I've heard angels speaking in their angelic language before I hear the demonic becomes a powerful weapon in deliverance ministry. I can, or even when we're praying for cities, regions, and nations, I don't repeat what the demonic says, but what I can say is, when I'm praying for someone, and I'm breaking a spirit of rejection, a spirit of death, a spirit of infirmity, and I hear in the spirit realm that demon speaking to that person, or we're breaking that demonic stronghold, say that, that, saying to the person I'm praying for, "You're never going to be set free, you're never going to be healed, you're never going to be whole, she doesn't have any authority." And I can hear that when I'm praying for people in deliverance, I'll hear it in the spirit realm, and I will speak out loud, out, out loud, out loud, out loud. I will say, "Thank you very much, Spirit of infirmity, for overplaying your hand, I heard your lie. I break this lie right now off this person right now in Jesus's name. You keep speaking your lies to them in infirmity, I command you to get out there, be healed today, right now." And so, it's awesome how this can happen, I can hear it happen over territories and regions. And so, it's a powerful weapon that we can use, but I am not intimidated when I hear in the spirit realm. Of course, I've operated like this for years, and so I'm not intimidated by it. I, I engage the Holy Spirit, and I know how to use it as a weapon of warfare to see breakthrough come, and to see regions set free, to see individuals set free, to hear God's strategy. There are times the Lord will allow me in my dreams to spy on demonic entities, and they don't know that I'm seeing them, but I am. And the Lord will have, and not only am I seeing them, I'm hearing them. And it becomes a powerful weapon when we're praying, when we're interceding, when we're ministering to individuals. And so, you can even discern in this hearing, we, you can even discern, like, say you're listening to music, right? And, and I, I trained nine years to sing opera, I love music, I listen to Christian music all the time. But I, I like other forms of worship, I mean, of music, other than just worship music. And so, but I am able to discern, I am able to discern by the sound of the music and by the feeling of the music that's being released, if it's okay to listen to, if it's not okay to listen to. And so, and trust me, I could give you a whole teaching at some point, I need to do this, because we had to study this in school when I trained in music. There are certain chords, certain sounds, certain rhythms. They know that music, sound influences people, influences emotions, either good or bad. So I have learned how to hear in that spirit realm even sounds with music. I've even learned how to know, oh, this isn't good, this is okay. And all of you who have discernment, you know this, and so you, you experience this as well. So we always hear those things, and we dialogue with the Lord about it. Now, let me give you an example, because I gave you an example of the vision, the open vision that I had with Paul. And when I gave you a vision of, the, an example of the open vision with Peter, let me just give you a real live example, this is many, many years ago, keep it nameless and faceless, but many, many years ago, you're a classical gal, come on, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just saying, I love Puccini, I just do, I do, I do. Anyway, but, but anyway, the, we were attending a church, and many, many years ago, I'm going to keep it nameless and faceless, and I'm going to keep the timeframe protected as well. But we, we had been attending this church, and, you know, because we're itinerant ministers, and at this time, we weren't pastoring. And I, we would go into the church service, and I could feel and sense, oh, just yuck, I mean, just yuck. And this had been going on for a little bit, and there was one time, we went into a service, and we sat there. And it was like, this, this door opened, this portal opened, and there were so many demons that were in the service, and I could hear them, I could feel them, I could sense them, I could hear them. And they weren't harming me, but they were mocking the Lord, they were mocking the people, they were smearing, I mean, it was like they had right to be there. And, and so, and this actually is in the book, this testimony is in the book. And, and when we left, I told my husband, there, somebody is, there's an open door. Somebody that has authority, somebody in leadership, there's sin going on. For that much activity, demonic activity to be welcomed into or to be in this service, something is going on, and I just told him, "I'm going to take this in intercession, and I'm going to pray. I can't go back into that atmosphere, it was so disturbing." And I began to pray, the Lord began to speak to me, and I actually, you know, said, "Lord, what do I do with this?" So I was going to go to somebody that I really trusted, a very mature believer that literally loved me and loved those that were in leadership in this church, and to say, "Hey, this is what's going on, this is what I'm sensing, what do you counsel me to do?" I, I didn't, I didn't talk to anyone about it, I didn't make it gossip, I didn't yeah, yeah about it, I took it in intercession. And then, when the Lord released me to say, "Why don't you take it to this person, because this person not only loves you, but loves the people in this church, and the leadership in the church, and they're gifted and understanding discernment and intercession, they'll give you wisdom on how to maneuver in this." I didn't know specifics, I didn't know exactly what the sin issue was, I just knew something had happened, and their door was open. And, and so, but literally, two days before I would go to this meeting to share this with this leader, this leader in the church was exposed in, in sin, and I understand, stood instantly, you know, obviously, at that point, what was going on. So I'm not telling you to go around and be critical of people, listen, I am not critical of people. We, we will talk about this as we mature in discernment. Discernment is not to be used as criticism, discernment is not to be used in a judgmental way. We want to pray, we want to seek the Holy Spirit, what is it that you're saying to me? Holy Spirit, pray, carry it in an intercession, seek His wisdom on how to maneuver in it forward in the situation. But obviously, with what I was feeling, I began interceding for this church, I began interceding for the leadership, I began interceding, God, whatever is going on, Lord, I pray for your mercy, I pray whatever sin door is open, that this person would be set free, whoever it is. Lord, I pray that you would come to them, and out of your love and mercy, they would experience radical freedom and deliverance. Lord, I pray whatever door is open, it would be shut. Lord, I pray that everything that's being done, if there's corruption or something going on that's being done behind closed doors and in hiddenness, that it would be brought to the light and exposed for the protection of the church, everybody in leadership and, and the people, you know, I carried it in intercession. And Lord, give me wisdom on what to do with this, what I'm sensing and feeling. And so, there, we, I had hearing in the spirit, I could hear in the spirit, and I was sensing in the spirit. I could sense and feel that demonic activity around me. And so, that leads me to, that leads me to talking about, let me go down a little bit, impressions, feelings, discernment, the sixth sense, and then we're going to come back to smelling here in a little bit. Eddie and Alice Smith are very, very good friends of ours. We were moved to Houston in 1990, and we were there with them through the year 2000 before we moved to Colorado Springs. And Eddie, you know, Alice has a very high gift of discernment, and Eddie was very used to being around prophetic intercessors. And, you know, when I was writing my book, he sent me this little, these words that I could use in the book, discernment the sixth sense. Now, I understand that people in the occult say that, that's not what he was saying. And so, but the reality is, is with the sixth sense, what does he mean by that? He literally is meaning with this, this, there's feelings, there's impressions, you just sense things and know things. And, and it's like, and so, it's, and so, we're in this spirit realm where it's not even necessarily seeing or hearing, you just feel it and you know it. And so, and so, it sounds mystical. And so, and so it sounds mystical and we're not meaning it to be mystical. But I appreciate the description of what he's saying with this sixth sense. Because discernment is something that is not experienced in the natural. So as seen in my testimony of what happened in the church that we were attending many years ago, when I had a, when I have a revelation or a knowing, or I know that I know, or a sensing that I'm prophetically sensing something and, and, and discerning something, you know, I know that it's real. But sometimes in the natural, there's no physical indication of that that is going on. And so you, we have to dialogue with the Holy Spirit. This is what I tell people. Pray and dialogue with the Holy Spirit about what he is saying. And I gave you a great example. I was hearing in the spirit, but literally how, how I first knew that there was demonic activity was I could sense it. I could feel it. I could feel the weight of it. I could sense the demons in the atmosphere. And then the Lord opened my ears where I could hear them, but I would know beyond the shadow of a doubt what I was sensing or hearing. Dave Beck, I saw in a dream, the demonic eye watching me. How do I pray against that? Will you pray? I shut the demonic eye in Jesus's name. I shut any watcher spirit, any demonic eye that's watching me. I, I, I break your power. I speak that you are blind. You will not be able to watch me. You will not be able to see me. Greater is he that is in me than he that is in the world. And I speak right now that you are blind and you will not be able to watch me in the spirit any longer in Jesus's name. And if it's, but sometimes if you're seeing something like that in a dream, David, I don't know you, so that, that can be a loaded question. Sometimes it could be that there's something in our generational bloodline that still needs to be dealt with. You know, there's many different answers I could give to that with that question. And if that's the case, we want to pray and say, Lord, is there something in my family bloodline where I still need to have that broken off? But if you're having, seeing in a dream where you're being watched by the demonic, that, that kind of thing, good, that kind of thing doesn't bother me. I, I take it as information and I say, okay. When I wake up from that dream, I say, I'll speak to every demonic spirit that's out there watching demonic eye in my dreams. I shut, I shut your eyes now. I speak that you are blind. I speak that you will no longer be able to find your way to me. You will not be able to harass me. If it's something that's happening in the occult realm, you want to pray and say, Lord, I break the power of the silver cord. That's a whole other teaching. That's a deliverance teaching. In the spirit, where, and anyone in the occult is trying to unleash something, I break the silver cord where they will not be able to these, to travel, to harass me. That's a whole other teaching that I just stumbled into. Yeah. And so you, you speak and you take authority over it and you command it to stop. But if you know that it's in a dream separate from your bloodline, you take authority over it and command it to stop. It has no right to be watching you. And, and you say, Lord, I thank you that the blood Jesus is more powerful than any demonic eye that is watching me, any demonic spirit. And I speak that you are blind now and I take full authority over you. If it's something in your generational bloodline, then you want to pray and ask the Lord about it. And if that's the case, then you want to say, hey, I need to get freedom. There's something in the occult in my family bloodline. If it's at a personal level that I, you know, I want to get set free from so it doesn't have access to harass me in my dreams. So those are the first two places that I would tell you to start with that. Great question, guys. I hope that's helpful for you. So we understand that we can see, we can hear, we can sense that sensing, that feeling that we can sense. And then there's also the sense of smell. I'm saying, yes, that does happen. And I'm going to read to you a scripture, 2 Corinthians 2, 14 through 16. But thank God, he has made us his captives and continues to lead us along in Christ's triumphal procession. We are triumphant. Amen? Now he uses us to spread the knowledge of Christ everywhere like a sweet perfume. So when we spread the knowledge of Christ everywhere, it's like a sweet perfume. It's a sweet fragrance, a sweet aroma. Our lives are Christ-like fragrance, rising up to God. So guys, as our lives, as we are living our lives unto the Lord and living in holiness and purity and, and we're living pleasing to the Lord and just our lives period, it is like a fragrance rising up to the Lord. Why? Because we are now the living temple. But this fragrance is perceived differently by those who are being saved and by those who are perishing. Isn't that interesting? To those who are perishing, we are a dreadful smell of death and doom. What does this mean? When we have that fragrance of the Lord, for those who are perishing, and, and I'm just going to say it this way, those demonic spirits, all right? Because I believe our fragrance can draw the loss to the Lord. Our lives as a living fragrance can draw the loss to the Lord. But even in that demonic realm, the fragrance that we release, to them it's like death and doom because it reminds even the demonic realm of the judgment they have already received from God to spend an eternity in hell and the fiery abyss. And we are the ones helping and partnering with the Lord and appropriating that fragrance of the blood sacrifice that he made on the cross because we are bought and saved and redeemed by his blood. So now we carry that fragrance. So guys, listen, whenever we're encountering even the demonic realm, the fragrance of the kingdom of God, we are the temple of the Lord. Jesus is alive in us, Christ Jesus alive in us, the hope of glory. Just our presence, just the fragrance as we are, as the living temple, that we have salvation of Jesus and Christ Jesus alive in us, the hope of glory. It's like death and doom, reminding the demonic realm of their rebellion, of their evil and their punishment for an eternity. We're their worst nightmare. Okay? Let me keep going. But to those who are being saved, this is what I'm talking about. To those who are being saved, we are a life-giving perfume. Our, our, our life becomes a fragrance and a perfume to those who are hungry for Jesus and the lost world, right? And who is adequate for such a task as this? Well, guys, you and I, we are bloodbought children of the kingdom of God. So guys, not only do we have a fragrance about us, but let me say this. There are times where the Holy Spirit will come into the room. There are times when Jesus will be made, is, is so manifest. I have been in many settings. I've encountered Jesus many times in dreams, in visions, in the throne room. I've been in corporate revival gatherings where he is literally walking in the room and everyone knows it. You don't have to convince everybody. Everybody knows it. And there's a fragrance that Jesus carries. It's like the rose of Sharon or there's the oil, the fragrance of, of, of sweet oil that is so hard to even put in, in words. I was teaching at my in-laws church a couple of years ago on intercession. And while I was teaching, all of a sudden this beautiful fragrance literally begin to emanate throughout the sanctuary. And my, and my mother-in-law, Pam Greenwood, was sitting on the front row. I said, do you smell that? Did someone spill anointing oil? And you could feel the presence of Jesus and the Holy Spirit very tangibly at that moment. And, and, and everybody said, I didn't spill anything. And she said, I didn't spill anything. So to make sure we weren't in the flesh, my mother-in-law, my kids call her me-ma. But Pam Greenwood started walking around the church. No anointing oil bottle had been opened or spilled. Literally as I was speaking about the Holy Spirit in Jesus and I was talking from Acts 2, the, literally the fragrance of the Holy Spirit, the fragrance of Jesus came into that entire sanctuary. It was a very holy moment. And so, and so we have that. Then there are many times even in deliverance ministry, we will be praying for someone and someone that has a stronghold of bondage or addiction. All of a sudden I can smell a strong odor, but it's worse than nicotine. It's very similar to nicotine, but much, much stronger, interestingly enough. Sometimes I can be praying for someone where there is a spirit of death and I could, and I'd be smell, I smelled death in the room. Or I can be in a region where there is a lot of bondage and addiction that is over a region and many people are in, trapped in addictions and I can smell that stronghold. There, there's a stronghold of death. I can smell that death in the atmosphere, stronghold over a region. I can smell that death over a region. And there, so there are many different examples that I can give you. There's a strange odor, foul odor that comes with an anti-Christ spirit and a witchcraft spirit. So I've learned to pay attention to those things. Because if I'm discerning that, I'm saying, Lord, am I discerning this just because I have the gift of discernment? Are you trying to show me something? Are you trying to teach me something? And so these are all parts of discernment that I really have brought out in this book and in this teaching because this is very real. Listen, we have a prayer network, Strategic Prayer Apostolic Network. And some of those people are on today. Brenda Beckel's on today. She's a part of that. And, and so, yes, I can smell it. There, there we go. Yes. And so, and, and I work with prophetic intercessors all the time. And we, these are comments, we will be praying for cities and regions, spheres of influence will be in our nation, other nations. And all of a sudden someone will like, do you hear that? Are you guys hearing that? All of a sudden another one will say, guys, are you feeling that? Do you feel that witchcraft? Do you feel, you know, that, that heaviness and do you feel that oppression? Do you feel that bondage? Or someone will say, guys, I am seeing, I am seeing the angelic realm. Guys, I'm seeing, I am seeing the root issue of how this principality came in. I'm seeing the principality, right? And so God will allow us to, in this gift of the discernment realm, to see, hear, feel, sense, smell, and all of those things. Sometimes people will even say with the sense of taste and that when they're reading the word, that there will be a real sweet taste or, or in their mouth, all of a sudden when they're reading a scripture that God's really wanting to highlight to him. And so I just want to encourage all of you and when, and when we hear his voice, that these are different ways that we can encounter him in this discernment realm. Now let me say this, sometimes discernment can cause confusion. And I'm going to land here and I'm going to end on a good testimony and then I'm going to pray. So we got about 10 more minutes to go. But sometimes discernment can cause confusion. And what do I mean by this? It can be confusing to believers and non-believers. Why? Because it's not taught. So just like what I'm teaching you here today, this morning, on seeing, hearing, feeling, sensing, knowing, smell, taste, all these things. Someone sent me a question and asked, is it different from intuition? I think sometimes, you know, we can be intuitive. God gives us wisdom and we can just know things. But these things that I, and I don't know if that person is on or not, but I'm going to answer it. I got that email this week. But sometimes, you know, discernment, yes. But all of those things that I was just talking about, seeing, hearing in the spirit realm, feeling and sensing, smelling, you know, that's even more than just being intuitive. And so I even tell people though, but being intuitive is a discernment prompt. So when you are intuitive about something, it's, 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 God's trying to bring revelation and wisdom and a knowing and an understanding and a discernment. So dialogue, ask the Holy Spirit about it. What, what is it that, that in that place of being intuitive? And that, that place of just having, you know, some wisdom that this is going to happen? You know, how, how, how can that increase my discernment? But let's go back to discernment can cause confusion. And those who function, like I said, we can see, hear, feel, perceive, sense, sometimes smell, and it begins at a very young age. And for many people, for me, this was the case. And it can happen in dreams. It can happen in visions. You can be seeing and hearing, feeling, sensing, smelling, perceiving the good and the bad. And so all of that can be intimidating if we don't have people around to help us mature and grow in this. And so for me, when I was seeing, hearing, feeling, sensing, all of that, it became a point of fear for me because the enemy took advantage of it. And I began to have nightmares and night terrors. I would see things that were very scary. But then I would also see good things as well. But the enemy used it as a point of fear to torment me because I didn't have understanding of how to deal with this. Even though I was raised in an awesome, wonderful Christian home. I mean, the, you know, how, how do you, how do you lead children that are functioning this way? And of course, what we do is we talk to them about the gift. We dialogue with them about it, you know? And we, and when they say, I'm seeing something that's scary, we pray with them and we say, Lord, whatever is intimidating this child, we command it to go. And Lord, send your angels, send your angels to bring peace. And so, so anyway, but it can cause confusion. And I'm going to give you an example. See, and this sounds really controversial, but I'm just going to say it. There are some people functioning in discernment. They're seeing, they're hearing, they're feeling, they're sensing. And they don't understand what it is and they will go. Now, I'm not telling you not to go to doctors. I'm not telling you not to go to doctors, not to go to counselors, not to go to physicians, not to go to somebody that can help you if you need their help. But what I'm saying is sometimes people are seeing, hearing, feeling, sensing, even Christians, you know, and, 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 you know, and they love the Lord, but they don't have language for it. So they go, you know, to a doctor and say, I keep seeing things. I, I see things. I, I see scary things. I see things that aren't scary. I, I don't know what to do with that. And because in many churches, seeing, hearing, feeling, sensing, perceiving is not taught, they think something's wrong with them. And so they go to a doctor and the doctor will say, you're hallucinating. Or sometimes they get labeled with something when it's actually just they're seeing, hearing, feeling, sensing gift that's in operation and they just need to be taught about that gift. And so I'm not going to say that's true 100% across the board in any way, shape, or form. But I'm just saying, we, if it's something spiritual that's going on, those that are in the medical field that are lost and don't have understanding are not going to be able to help us in that spiritual plane because they don't understand that either. And so, and so this is one reason why I'm telling this. Now, I'm going to read to you a testimony from a gal. It's in the book and I'm just going to read it to you. It's a little bit long, but it'll help me explain this to you. Throughout a life, this, this gal had abuse in, in her life. Throughout a life of abuse and trauma, I was diagnosed with major depression, anxiety, disorders, eating disorders, multiple personality disorders, struggled with addictions and had numerous suicide attempts. I had hallucinations and heard voices which only intensified my desire to escape and harm myself. Taking 15 prescriptions per day resulted in weight gain and I reached 270 pounds. After many years of therapy and hospitalizations, at age 24, I was declared permanently mentally disabled and plans were made to have me court committed to the state mental institution for the rest of my life. I accepted Christ as my Savior at age 12 and even felt called to ministry. I had a genuine love for God and for people and continue to serve in the church as often as possible. I memorized scriptures and did everything religion had taught me until I could no longer function and my only hope was heaven. After each failed suicide attempt, the pastor scheduled, the pastor scheduled for hospital visitation would come and encourage me to get better. Three weeks, weeks later, I would be back at church and no one ever said a word. I knew it was one thing for the world to say I was hopeless. But their lies were reinforced when the church had no other solutions. In my desperation to not be locked up for life, I discovered mercy multiplied. Through a process of discipleship, counseling and deliverance, God began to restore my life. For the first time, I was discovering my identity in Christ and how to apply the authority he has given me. As I renewed my mind with his word, I learned how As I renewed my mind with his word, I learned how to take my thoughts captive and to control my flesh. I realized that I had a voice and I could choose life. Within that year, I stopped taking all medication and lost over 100 pounds. I was connected in a life-giving, non-denominational church and learning to worship and cultivate a relationship with God. Being filled with the Holy Spirit was a game changer for me. I say, "Speaking in tongues is my superpower." "The mystery of the supernatural things was a new revelation after previously judging everything weird as demonic. I would never have chosen to participate in something demonic, yet I cannot deny the bondage that controlled my life. I do not believe all mental illness is demonic or discernment in action, but I know from experience that demons will take advantage of a mental illness and intensify the battle raging in the spirit realm to cause heightened confusion. Satan is a legalist and seeks opportunity for an open door. If we're not aware of the spiritual realm, then we, then we try to explain it in the natural." Wow. "After psychological testing, the doctor told me, 'You have the most creative imagination and the most active fantasy life of anyone we've tested in our 20 years of practice.' I've always been creative. Imagination was an escape for me. Dealing with multiple personality disorder, I discovered that it actually begins as a means of protection during trauma. It's during the trance-like state of switching where demons take advantage and pose as other personalities. In my case, I needed inner healing to deal with each trauma in my soul. I recognized any remaining personalities as evil spirits and commanded them to leave. If I had not learned about discernment in the spiritual realm, I would have not had complete freedom." Why? Because much of what I was experiencing required discernment to know what was demonic, my flesh, or emotion. And what was also key to learn was a great deal of what I was discerning in others and in the spirit realm, I thought, she thought, was her, she says this, "I thought was my own issue, which added to my confused state." Because discernment is so real to people who are feeling it. Many times, they think that it is them. What she was seeing and hearing in the spirit realm was not hallucinations. It was her discernment gift. But with all the other trauma she had in her life, it got labeled as something such as, uh, mental illness, hallucinations, but it was actually her gift of discernment in operation. When she got totally healed and set free, that part of, that part has not ever gone away. She still sees and hears and feels and knows in the spirit realm, but she understands what it is and is no longer afraid of it. Now let me finish her story. "Because of my history with physical and mental illness, I've had to learn not to automatically accept what I'm seeing, hearing, thinking, and feeling as my own personal issue. It's easy to be deceived and think, 'Oh, no, I'm dealing with this again.'" "I now realize discernment can often be a call to intercede for someone else experiencing that same thing. It is now an honor to know and discern how to pray specifically." Now I'm almost done. I'm going to read one more paragraph. "As I grow in spiritual discernment, I, I can recognize, 'I've always had an eye for detail or see words as pictures.' I do that same thing. How many of you see words as pictures? Listen, 'I see words mantled over people in the spirit realm for their prophetic destiny. Not all the time, but many, many times I do. You'll hear me when I'm prophesying. I see the words over you in the spirit.'" Okay? So that, let me go back to her story, and I shifted into myself, how I function as well. "So, 'I can recognize, 'I've always had an eye for detail or see words as pictures. I love receiving dreams and visions. Even in the mental institutions, I was encouraging others and speaking life over them. Though I had little knowledge of the spiritual realm, something in me would rise beyond my emotional struggle to challenge others. No amount of medication could keep it suppressed. Ironically, celebrating imagination, which I now realize was my gift of discernment in action.'" See, this doctor, when he tested her, said, "You have imagination." But the reality was, it was a gift of discernment in action. "And having permission to dream has brought great peace and mental health." Listen to that powerful testimony. Yes, she had trauma in her life. That was, that caused some of what she went through. But the more freedom she got, when she got totally healed from those demons and set free from the demons and got emotional healing, she instantly had the understanding of, "Oh, my goodness, I'm a discerner. What I've been seeing, hearing, feeling, and sensing in the spirit is very real. And some of what I was seeing, hearing, feeling, and sensing, I thought it was me, and I claimed it as my own, when it was me discerning and feeling and hearing and sensing and perceiving in the spirit realm what was around me and for others." So guys, I pray this empowers you. Not a lot of people talk about this stuff, but I pray that it so empowers you. If it has, share it with others that you think it will help. Karen's asking. Um, the book is awesome. I mean, I hope the book is awesome for you. It's been awesome for so many. Karen, I believe that you can, um, I, you can go to our website and, uh, christianharvestintl.org. And, um, and, and there should be places for you to fill out applications. Uh, you can also, Karen, email, um, our assistant, uh, at C H I. I'm doing this on my phone, so I can't type while I'm doing this. Uh, it's weird to type on the phone while I'm doing this. But C H I at christianharvestintl.org. C H I at christianharvestintl.org. And, uh, then just email her and say, "I'm very interested in finding out more about the mentoring program or signing up," and, and she can direct you in the right way of how to do that. And so guys, I pray that this helps you and that it blesses you. I'm really trying to bring some spiritual things into easy language of understanding to help empower each of you and all of us in the body of Christ. Uh, and, and we have to mature in this, right? We've got to learn how, guys, I discern all the time, but I, I function normally. I don't, what I'm discerning, if I even discern darkness in the spirit realm, it doesn't control me. I can discern and rise above it and live above it. "Greater is he that is in me than he that is in the world. I carry the fragrance of heaven. I carry the glory of heaven, Christ Jesus alive in us, the hope of glory." So when I go to a place that I'm like, "Ooh, I feel that witchcraft." It doesn't control me. It doesn't come on me. It doesn't harm me. Because I am, because I carry the presence of Jesus Christ Jesus, the hope of glory, alive in us. We are the spiritual atmosphere changers. So we've got to get this understanding, so even as we're discerning, it doesn't waylay us and we can't function normally, but we rise up knowing who we are. And we say, "Holy Spirit, what is this that I'm discerning and feeling? Am I supposed to just pray about it? Is there an assignment in this that I'm supposed to do?" Uh, we, we can totally feel things around us and sense us, but it does not affect us. We've got to learn how to do that in the body of Christ while we're still getting strategies to see the breakthrough come for that person, for that region, for that sphere of influence that we're in. Amen? So let me pray for you. I pray that this has blessed you. Guys, I'm sorry that the camera was blurry, who, but the audio was good. So Lord, right now, I just thank you for all who are listening now and who will listen in the days ahead. Lord, I pray, Lord, for this increase in discernment and maturing in discernment that this is giving everyone. And Lord, I thank you, Father God, for these warriors, and these, uh, intercessors, and these prophetic intercessors, and those that function in discernment, that how this is empowering them. And Lord, I thank you that they will go from glory to glory in you, and we speak, increase in Jesus' name. If you don't have the book, get the book, Discerning the Spirit Realm. Woo-hoo! And please leave a review on Amazon or type up a testimony and send it to us. And yes, if that you're still interested in the mentoring, like I said, uh, you can go to our website, christianharvestintl.org, or email our assistant, uh, Rebecca, her name is also Rebecca, at C H I at christianharvestintl.org. C H I at christianharvestintl.org. And guys, I pray this is so helpful for you. I know when I started learning all of this from Alice Smith, this was a lifesaver for me. His, your life, and, and of course, we had gotten spirit-filled and filled with the spirit, but we'd been in, you know, traditional churches, Baptist churches, and these are not things that you can talk about with everyone, because they'll just look at you, their head tilted going, "What? What are you saying?" And so, and so I pray that this empowers you, and this will cause you to grow in this discernment arena. God bless you all, and this week is Thanksgiving week. And so I don't know if I'll come on Thursday or Friday. Uh, I have all the family coming in, and we're doing a joint birthday celebration on Friday uh, for everyone's birthday that has been in October and November. So, but if I have time, I will. If not, we'll post the next one where I will jump on in the first week of December. And I pray that this blesses you guys. Have an amazing Thanksgiving week with family and friends. We have so much to be thankful for, and I know I need to come on and, and even share more about what I'm feeling and sensing in our nation right now. But I can tell you this, go to Elijah List, because I had a prophetic vision in 2019, vision. And you can go to it. Go search on Elijah List, Rebecca Greenwood, or you can, I think it's even on our website, what God showed me over the next five years. Go to Elijah List, type in Rebecca Greenwood, April 2019 or May 2019. And the vision that the Lord gave me for the U.S. is right there, that he spoke to me in April of 2019. And I will say that he was saying over and over and over again that we are, we're going to enter into a season of historic movements of exposure, of corruption in our nation, historic movements of exposure. And I literally, I know, uh, put exposure, exposure, exposure. And so that portion of that word, we are watching that right now. So anyway, I love you all, and there's tips on how to pray in that word as well, if you go back and look at it. I love you all. Bless you all. Talk to you next time. Bye-bye.